Board of Supervisors meeting on September 11, 2024 at 5:32 to order. We welcome all especially new Patent Township residents to the Patent Township community, a place for all. Before we begin our meeting, can we get a moment of silence for the 23rd anniversary of 9/11? Let us remember those who lost their lives on that day. Let us also remember the family, friends, and colleagues who had to go on with their lives with this tremendous loss. And also let us remember and salute those who risked their lives to help those in need, our fire, police, EMS, EMT, and all the unsung heroes who we will remember this day. But we are a country that is resilient and brave. We have an indestructible spirit to keep going when times are at its lowest. So today, we ask you to keep in your thoughts and prayers the memory of those who lost their lives on September 11, 2001. So if we can just bow our heads for a minute? Thank you. Now, as you are able, please rise and join the board in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Announcements? Amy, are there any announcements?
There are no announcements.
Are there any additions to the posted agenda? Are there any additional items to be added to the agenda at this time? All right, seeing none. Next is public comments. Residents and taxpayer may address the board on issues of interest to the township. Comments related to a specific agenda item should be deferred until that point in the meeting. If you are attending by Zoom, please use the raised hand feature of the Zoom application and wait for the chair to indicate that it is your opportunity to speak. If you are attending in person, please approach the podium and wait for the chair to indicate it is your opportunity to speak. Public comments are limited to five minutes per person. Are there any public comments at this time?
See, Amy.
All right, next is the presentation and public hearing. First is proclaiming Hispanic Heritage Month. Amy, would you like to introduce that? And Supervisor Whitman will read the proclamation.
Sure. Hispanic Heritage Month is celebrated September 15 through October 15, and the board should proclaim September as Hispanic Heritage Month in Patent Township.
Okay. So the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month celebrates the rich cultural traditions and honors the significant achievements of our Hispanic communities; and whereas the 2024 theme is pioneers of change shaping the future together; and whereas the Hispanic community makes up the largest ethnic minority group in the country and the fastest-growing minority community in the Commonwealth and make valuable and defining contributions in all aspects of our society; and whereas many brave Hispanics have served with honor and distinction in military conflicts since Revolutionary War and continue to defend our country today as members of the armed forces, and some of these outstanding servicemen and women, whose names we will never know, but their service and sacrifices will not be forgotten; and whereas 61 Hispanic Americans have received the Congressional Medal of Honor, the highest award for valor and action against enemy forces; and whereas Hispanic Americans are public servants holding posts at the highest levels of government of the United States, including one seat on the Supreme Court; now, therefore, for their inspiration, talents, culture, traditions, and deep connections to family, faith, and community, all of which contribute to the greatness of this country, the Patent Township Board of Supervisors hereby recognizes September 15 through October 15, 2024, as Hispanic Heritage Month in Patent Township, and encourages all residents to acknowledge Hispanic contributions and achievements throughout the month.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to accrue the proclamation for Hispanic Heritage Month?
Certainly.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The proclamation passes? All right, thank you. Next on the agenda is proclaiming Suicide Prevention Month. That will be read into the proclamation by Supervisor McBruder.
All right, thank you. So the National Suicide Prevention Action Month proclamation, whereas with September being recognized as Suicide Awareness Month, the National Suicide Prevention in Action Month proclamation was created to raise the visibility of mental health and proactive suicide prevention resources in our community. We also want to start the conversation, destigmatize it, and help connect people with appropriate support services. And whereas according to the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, suicide is the second leading cause of death among individuals between the ages 10 and 34, with more than 48,000 people dying by suicide annually in the United States. And whereas according to Hope for the Day, with an average of 132 suicides completed daily, and each one directly impacting 100 additional people, including friends, service members, families, social media connections, and neighbors, we can safely assume everyone has been impacted by suicide. And whereas the Patent Township Board of Supervisors publicly places its full support behind those who work in the field of mental health, education, and law enforcement. And whereas we encourage all residents to take time to understand mental health through education and recognize that we need to take care of our mental health while we take care of each other. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Patent Township Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim the month of September 2024 as National Suicide Prevention in Action Month. Proclaim this 11th day of September 2024 by Patent Township Board of Supervisors.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to accrue the proclamation? Can I get a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The proclamation passes. Next on the agenda is Resolution 2024-10, adopting the Center County Economic Development Strategic Plan. Amy, you want to give an update?
Sure, so I'll kick this off, and then we have members of the CBICC here to talk about the plan itself. The CBICC has been working collaboratively with members of its Economic Development Council and Camoin Associates to draft an economic development plan over the last year. The plan considers the strengths of the county and provides targeted areas for economic growth in the future. I had the pleasure of serving on the Economic Development Council along with representatives from local businesses, the county, Penn State, and other center region municipalities. The plan is complete, and there's been discussion about having our municipal partners and also the county and the COG adopt or support the plan in some fashion. And we talked this morning at the manager's breakfast about how that would look, and also in taking pieces of the plan and putting them into the Center Region Comprehensive Plan. Most comprehensive plans do have an economic development component to them, so this would be consistent with what's done elsewhere across the state. So I'll let Greg and Todd from CBICC introduce themselves, and then go through the plan with you and answer any questions that you might have.
Great, thanks, Amy, and good evening. Thanks for allowing us to be here tonight. My name's Greg Scott. I'm the president and CEO of the CBICC, the Chamber for Center County. Todd Dolan is our vice president of economic development. It's great for us to be here. Our role and mission at CBICC is we really have two. One is we are a traditional chamber with membership. We have about 700 members, and we are supporting business and we're trying to grow business. Secondly, we are the designated economic development organization for the county. So with that, we are also trying to help our businesses grow, help them stay here, attract new businesses to come in, and basically help promote the growth and economic prosperity for our community here. So just a couple of things. One, Todd and I are both Patent Township residents, so we have that. It's good to be here today, and thank you all for your service to Patent Township. Secondly, I want to acknowledge and thank Patent Township for the support of the Center County Economic Development Partnership. Patent Township has been one of our strongest supporters of the work we do in promoting economic development, and it allows us to do the work for not only the township, but for the county at large. And so a big portion of what we're going to talk about tonight has been supported through the economic development efforts that you've put forward. Amy Farkas, as a township manager, has been a tremendous partner from the beginning. I've been at the chamber for three years. Todd's been here for about a year and a half, and we've worked closely with Amy in her previous role, but even more closely as she joined the Patent Township team. So thank you for that, and I appreciate it. So, you know, I mentioned that I've been here for about three years, coming up in October, and it has always been my vision to have a strategic plan that laid out a more of a long-term strategy of specific actions we would take to promote economic development in our county and help our community and our economic partners, our businesses, grow to support our community. So with that in mind, we wanted to start by creating a vision, a collaborative and comprehensive, common vision for the county. And so we launched into a process shortly after Todd arrived last May of first establishing an economic development council, which was made up of our economic development partners, such as Patent Township. Amy mentioned she sits on the Economic Development Council, but we went broadly to make sure we had a diverse population included in that, on that council, to help guide our efforts and hold us accountable for actions and results. So we put this committee together. Shortly after that, we hired a consultant to help us facilitate working through the plan. So we saw an opportunity through developing in this, and I've said this, I'll say at the beginning, I'll say it at the end. This is not a CBICC plan. This is a Center County Community Plan for Economic Development. So we are looking, one of the things that we wanted to do in developing the plan was make sure that we had complete community involvement. And so Todd will talk a little bit about the organizations, the people, the number of folks that we have engaged with throughout the process to put this together, to come up with a really comprehensive, coordinated plan that we feel helps the county stay focused, and as I like to say, have us all rowing the boat in the same direction. There are a lot, and we acknowledge this, there's two of us here. There are so many people across this county that are focused on economic development, doing economic development, and we wanted to hear from them, we wanted to bring everybody together and provide some synergy among those groups, help us advance our goals of growth and prosperity in the county. On the backside of this plan, we have plans to officially publicly reveal the plan on October 9 at a luncheon at the Penn Stater. We'll have a number of representatives, President Ben Dupudi from Penn State, County Commissioner Mark Higgins, representatives from the state, who will talk about our alignment with the state economic development strategy, so they'll talk about that. So that will be our moment to launch the plan, and then it's about execution, it's about results, it's about moving forward. And so we really see this plan as an opportunity to energize our community, to move forward and make progress. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Todd for a minute to talk about how we got to where we are today, the breadth of work that we've done, but then also dive a little bit into the focus areas that have floated up through our work, and then some of the specific areas that we will take action on and goals that will move forward. So, Todd.
Great. Could we go to the next? Over. There we go. So this has been quite a process. We started over a year ago. It seems longer, but it's been about a year. It started out, we selected a consultant. We went through about 16 different consulting firms. We narrowed it down to six to three, and then finally picked the one that actually had a really good match with what our area has. We have a major educational institution, town attached to it, they've done work in similar areas. We reviewed their proposal, and it really aligned with what we were looking for. Since then, we've had them in town several times, we've had several focus groups, we've had many interviews, we've met with businesses, we've met with our other partner nonprofit organizations, get better understanding of what our community needs are, from large businesses, university, to small startups and entrepreneurs. Which brings us through the summer. We got our initial draft, which we've been refining, and right now, we're at the point where we're finishing up and having a final draft, which we're excited to roll out in less than a month.
Less than a month. Next one.
Like I said, this is who we've met with. We've met with, if we tallied everything up, I think we've probably talked with over 150 people to get input, again, ranging from our major employers, to educational providers, to some of the other nonprofit partners and organizations. And what we heard loud and clear is that they wanted everybody's goal and their drivers, they want the plan to be collaborative, meaning they want to have input from as many organizations as possible. They want it to be accountable, meaning that we have clear who does what and who's responsible for what, and that it's sustainable, meaning that it's not a one-year plan and done, that this would actually go for a full, maybe 10-plus years and just continue on. They want it to be economically resilient, meaning that we're going to focus on new industries that we have economic strengths in, that we're not over-reliant on a single entity or a single employer to drive our local economy, to diversify our economy and grow our local businesses. That's the main focus. A lot of people say we need to do more for our local businesses that have been here for a number of years, and also for our startups. And last one, we need to be more competitive. We have a lot of strengths in our area, how do we leverage those strengths to not just our surrounding area, but across Pennsylvania and across the country? So through our meetings and all the input that we've been gathering, we were able to, I think we got about 30 or so different topics that people would bring up, ranging from development issues to workforce issues to tourism to transportation. We did our best to try to pull all of those different ideas together, and we put them into four focus areas, four categories. The four categories we put them into, you can see here, the business retention expansion, targeted emerging industries, workforce, education, and our built-in natural. Yes?
Can I just stop you for a second? I think that our video is not advancing. I just, so that what it means is our viewers at home won't be able to follow, so.
Yeah, this is a Zoom.
Oh, there we go. Thanks.
This is a Zoom problem.
Was I right on that?
Yeah, it does this.
Okay. Sorry to interrupt. I just switched to that. This is good, but it's not good for our viewers at home, so, great, thanks. Okay, thanks, Larry.
So I would like to quickly go over each one, is that okay? And kind of which different focus area and what topics we're looking to cover. So total, our plan, we've actually come together, we've come up with about 12 goals, and with each goal, we have a total of about 30 action items that we've established. So the main buckets or the main focus areas that we have are, the first one is business retention expansion. This area is really focusing on ourselves locally here. This is focusing on our existing businesses and our startups, and what we can do to help grow those. The main one, this one, our main directive and our main action item is to develop a local concierge service for small businesses. And this is something we've already started dealing with just over the last few months because we've been hearing so much about this, how we need more support for our local businesses. There are organizations out there that help businesses in many different ways, but this is to coordinate all of our efforts so that no matter which direction small business or startup would come to us, we would know exactly what resources were available and where to send them, so it's a seamless process across the board. Another item that Greg mentioned is that simultaneously, just a few months ago, the state actually completed their statewide economic development plan out. I think we had a chance to review it, but that was actually very, very good timing because we were in the middle of putting ours together. So what we were able to do is actually align our plan with what the state's initiatives are, and we identified the industries the state's looking to grow, and so that will unlock some funding for industries that are within our area. So, and we're actually one of the first, I believe we're the first area to actually move forward with developing a plan on the heels of what the state just recently put out. The next one is targeted emerging industries. Now, this is looking outward, so we're looking inward at our current businesses, outward is what are our strengths, what sets us apart from our neighboring jurisdictions, our some cities, other states? And one of the areas that we've really identified is that we have a very strong sensor development, sensor manufacturing technology industry here in Center County. We, when we were working with our consultants, we asked specifically, what industry do we have a strong advantage in? They ran numbers, they did metrics, they came up with a calculation called a location quotient, which determined that if a location quotient is one, it means you are on par nationally in a certain industry. And anything above that could be one and a half or two, it means you're very strong. We have a location quotient of five, which is very high in sensor development and sensor technology. So this industry cluster, we have many businesses, and we have a lot of workers and a strong workforce in this area. The bonus is that this is also an area that the universities bring a lot of money and effort and resources into growing as well. So we have these two, you know, our economic environment and our major employer in Penn State University are aligned with these two industries, with this industry. So this is the one that we've really targeted. So moving forward, we're not looking to just have a shotgun blast of trying to see what all business, this is very strategic, very focused, that the sensor technology industry is a really strong asset in our community. The best part is it cuts across many different industries, the healthcare industry, ag tech, manufacturing, even municipal utilities across anywhere in the country. So the next step with that one, it's also been branding ourselves, our Center County, that we can actually call ourselves and highlight, make a clear sales pitch on why this is our home for that type of industry. For example, we were throwing the idea that we are a sensor valley, something like that to be able to stand behind to create a new image of what industry we're working in. The third one is workforce and education. This was a big one. This cuts across not just our educational providers such as POCSE, Penn State University, but our colleges such as CPI, South Hills, the new Penn Highlands Community College in Bell Pond, our high schools. We wanted to focus on three areas. The first one, talent attraction. How do we attract high-end talent to some of our major employers? How do we convince people that live in other states to come to Central Pennsylvania by highlighting our quality of life, education, safety, all of those assets? Again, going back to grade. Second one is working with our major employers to understand what their needs are or what the challenges are. Is it transportation issues, childcare issues? What is it that our local employers are feeling as far as not being able to build specific positions? Now, the last one is working with our high schools and trade schools, helping students find a career pathway, the ones that haven't figured out exactly which industry to go into yet, where there's a future. This is to work with them in connecting our local businesses with the school districts, with CPI, with South Hills, in much stronger coordinated effort to identify what curriculums needed in the real world, and also create a pipeline for students to come through so that they have immediate job opportunities after they finish their course work. Last one is our built-in natural environment. This includes, the big piece of it really includes our tourism. We've identified and recognized that tourism is a major economic driver for our area, and it's something that we want to continue to grow in, but do that the smartest, safest way. Part of that also is the housing needs. If we're trying to grow our area, you know, retain some students from Penn State to work with our local businesses, where are they going to live? I recently moved here, just about a year ago. It's not easy. It isn't easy. And so we recognize that housing is a major piece of how we're going to grow, we want to be very smart about that. So again, we're working to figure out, what are the income levels, what are the job openings that are out there, and then what housing income bracket are we seeing the most, the tightest pinch right now? So housing is a major piece of this because economic development includes so many of these things, and housing is definitely one piece of that. And then the last piece of our built-in natural environment is certainly our four downtowns, our central business districts, Upstate College, Phillipsburg, Bell Pond, Einberg Mills, our small towns, they have their own unique personality, their unique vibe. How do we unlock some state funding? There's different programs out there, work together to have a common voice to be able to attract investment in some of those areas and keep their personality qualities, which actually creates why, you know, Center County is such a great place, but also brings together sort of a common vision in what it is that we want, how we want to grow our downtowns. So I hope that wasn't too much of a crash course in everything that we've been trying to do, one year's worth of work into, what is it, about 10-minute presentation escape, but I hope that gives you an idea of the general thought and process that we went through to get to where we're today.
There was one, in the built-in natural environment, we're also focused on site development.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
So that was the, particularly in Patent Township, one of the areas we've called out is the airport development district. We think there is tremendous opportunity for development and around the airport, and there's many layers to that. And I know that Patent Township, in working with Amy, is already focused on this, so we want to partner in that area, we want to partner. We think there are opportunities in the state budget that was approved this year, there's a program called PA Sites, was funded at $400 million. So if we can make ourselves competitive in those areas, we want to get some of that funding here to help us develop sites, such as that, there's also the area around in College Township, around the Nittany Mall, the Shiloh Road area that's ripe for development, and we have our eye on a few other locations as well. So that infrastructure piece also includes things like transportation, working with the airport, how do we make the airport attractive for it, to retain and attract new airlines to come in? So it's all wrapped into that. So that's kind of a summary of the essence of the plan, like what is in there. So where do we go from here as we move forward? I think you can go, yeah, we've got it. So we are working on prioritizing. As, if you look at the detail of the goals and actions, there's about 12 goals, and there's around 34 action items. We can't take those on all at once. So there's a prioritization process that Todd and I are working with our stakeholders to go through to say, what are the most important things we need to attack right out of the gate? Or are important actions to take that unlock future actions, something that needs to be, that is dependent on one of those initial steps? So we're working on that, identifying that. The other critical piece is who are the stakeholders or the leaders that are going to lead each of these actions? And this goes back to my comment- And this goes back to my comment that this is a, this is a community center county plan, it's not a CBI. So, we're not taking the lead on all of this. And I'll give you an example. Todd mentioned tourism. The goal and the actions under that completely align with the Happy Valley Adventure Bureau's mission. So, when we sat down with their leadership, Fritz Smith, he takes, he takes ownership of that goal and action. And his team, his board, he will work to advance that. And we are working to identify all of the leaders for each of these actions. And we become a part of the team that helps to hold our community accountable to move these actions forward. So, I will say, this is not a prescriptive strategic plan. This is a overarching, it focuses on the overarching goals of what we want to achieve. The actions will have further development to get prescriptive, and we'll have the right people assigned to those. There will be teams that, that work on each of these actions to move them forward. Go on to the next slide, Larry. So, how are we rolling this out? Part of this is, I mentioned the luncheon on October the 9th where we're going to officially roll it out. But we're going to, we're going to be doing a promotion of this plan to make sure that the details get out, that people understand what we're doing. Again, to build that community support. We are also working with Amy, her fellow managers, the county, Penn State, Neely, to get the endorsement and the support of this plan. It gives it the credibility that it is, and it reinforces this community plan that we're moving forward with. So, I applaud your leadership and take that you're the first one that we're talking to through Amy's leadership. She wanted to make sure Patton Township provided that leadership, and we really see it that way. So, it, it will mean a lot to the fact of us moving forward, that we have the support of the community, and the municipalities are a big, big part of that moving forward. You go to the next slide, Larry. That's what I just talked about. We're also looking for nonprofit support, our educational providers, we're working with each of them. So, we're, we're continuing to move forward and have many, many discussions about this and get the buy-in. We need to move this forward. So, this is a plan that, as Todd and I went back and researched, this, this level of planning has not been done in over 20 years here in our community. The alignment with the state, the timing of that is absolutely, I can't say that we planned it that way, it just worked out. But we have established strong relationships with the state so that they are aware of what we're doing and they're supportive of what we're doing. And I think that's going to, that's going to be fruitful for us down as we start to execute this plan. So, with that, I thank you again for your time tonight, for your leadership and your support of economic development in Center County. Todd and I would be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Supervisor Abe Omsken?
This is not a question, but I was a member of the chamber in the late 1970s when we were running for office.
Okay.
And one of the things, two things that were accomplished then, largely with the help of Mr. Hallbaker, who had recently finished developing Park Forest Village, was to get the airport down here. It was at that time Phillipsburg.
Phillipsburg, yeah.
And secondly, to get a connection with I-80. Because the plan at that time was to have the existing interstate go straight down to Milesburg and out that way. And we'd, we'd still be waiting for a connection to 80.
Right.
And so, that, both of those things were done around 1980.
Yeah, that's great. And, you know, transportation is clearly an economic development driver. I mean, the, the work that's being done now to have the high-speed interchange off of Interstate 80 and 99 is a tremendous benefit. Eventually, the connector piece between here and Potter's Mills is going to be tremendous for us. The Top Trees exit continues years later to bear economic development fruit. I mean, we're seeing it now with the development of Top Trees West, what's happening there. That development in and around, just that project to, that exit off of 99 has been tremendous and it continues. So, we are absolutely focused on that. And one of the projects from a transportation perspective that we're looking at is that connector road from the airport to Innovation Park that could connect the airport directly to I-99. And as we look at development around the airport, we think that is one of the keys to unlocking that area to development.
Supervisor Whitman?
I have three questions. The luncheon on October 9th, remember, so we can attend that?
Absolutely, absolutely.
I can help you guys, yep. Okay.
Yep.
I know, for me, it's in between a couple of travel things, and we have a conference starting on the 10th. Okay.
Yep.
So, that's.
Yeah, if you go to our website, and we can certainly provide a link to the registration for that. But we are, we are planning for, we're planning for 300 attendees.
Okay.
And so, it's, it is filling up fast, so if you're, if you're interested, go ahead and check that. We can make sure Amy has the link.
I'll take that, okay.
Yeah. We'd love to see you there.
Yeah, oh shoot. Oh, yes, and can I have a PDF of these? Can I have a file of this, these slides here?
Absolutely.
I can send that to you. They're too small for me to read.
Yeah, I know, I know.
And the last thing, this is actually maybe more important. I see it as an opportunity. So, I am the sustainability, climate action kind of nerd. I have those lenses, I wear them all the time. I try not to be too obnoxious, but I also, you know, I'm sort of a squeaky wheel. So, in your description of it, I've sort of lost track of where these are, but I know you used the word sustainability, I think it was on one of those slides.
Yes, yes.
And you talked about economic sustainability.
Yes.
I think that you could very easily also include an ecological or global sustainability, climate sustainability.
Yes.
I know that, that is still, I would say that is a word not without controversy. I, I get it. Certainly in the State College area, people are very supportive of climate action. And in fact, the Council of Governments, the six, our six municipalities here have developed a climate action and adaptation plan. Pam Adams is heading that up. Well, I don't mean to add anything onto her plate at all, she's, she works two jobs already, as does someone else in this room. But I, I just challenge you to that. I, so I, I know Amy's on that board, and if you have any thoughts or insights, and I would be willing to help tweak it a little bit. Not so much to make you do more, but that's always what somebody with my mindset hopes. But that there are small tweaks or small changes or focuses that could be taken that actually will make a change, and you should toot your horn.
Right.
I think everybody should. So, and it encourages other people. So, with that.
Well, thank you, Betsy, for that comment.
Sounds really exciting, the whole plan, yeah.
Thank you. One of the things that Todd and I have been working on over the last month to kind of dial this in, there have been some topics like that that have surfaced, and we've said, well, where do we fit these into a goal? Where do we fit these into an action? And actually, some things like this, sustainability focused on the environment, actually float above all of these. So, they become a guiding principle.
Yeah.
In the plan.
You've already got the nature. And the highways that you put in, you talked about the buses, when you talked about housing, affordable housing, the location of that. It does all fit together.
That's right.
So, it's just a matter of, you know, finding that overarching lens and tapping into it.
That's right.
So, that's.
Yeah, great point.
I'm delighted to see this. Thank you for that work.
Supervisor McRuder?
Thanks for your presentation. Yeah, I have a few questions, some not fully thought out, but one, I'm curious, because you had mentioned the idea of being competitive, and I think what came from that for me was, what are the limitations? Particularly when we're thinking about economic development for our business, particularly localized here in Patton Township. You may not have specifics on that, but I'm just curious about what the limitations are for our businesses here in Patton Township? And how this then would help to sort of satisfy?
Yeah, I think we touch on a few of these. Certainly, two that come up in every conversation and are certainly embedded in this plan. Workforce, having an adequate workforce, trained and ready to go. So, we enjoy, not only here, but in Center County, a low unemployment rate. So, we don't have a lot of bench strength as far as employment goes. In fact, we, we import, I can't remember the exact number, it's around 40% of our labor comes from outside the county. And so, that's one, one issue, that's one barrier that we, we're expressly, specifically addressing. The second is housing. It comes up in every circle. Todd talked about it, the fact that there's limited attainable housing here is, is a true issue. It's not unique to us in Center County. It is a national issue, but it's not one that, just because it's a national issue, we want to turn away from. So, those are two really specific things that I think affect this township, but also the county in general. You get a little broader than that, I mean, the transportation issues that we just talked about, getting in and out of the county, has gotten a lot better. And that ties into workforce, and it ties into housing as well. And then you take transportation down even further, you know, our airport is a bit of a limitation. We hear that from companies and business travelers all the time, the lack of access to like a major hub and enough flights getting to those places. So, it's an area we want to focus on. Those are some of the, some of the limitations. We have so many strengths. You know, the other one, it's not really a limitation, but, and Todd mentioned this too, you know, diversifying our economy and not just relying on the university and trying to do that. Over the years, we have had less and less manufacturing. Most of our jobs are held in education, government, and healthcare. That's where the majority of our, our jobs come from. And we want to, as that percentage of jobs outside of the area has shrunk, we want to try to grow those in a very smart way. And I think that's why we want to get targeted in the industries that we think can provide good jobs in the technology area. And we have a definite strength in that area. Hopefully, that answers some of your questions.
Yeah, that's helpful. Secondly, my second question is, what are accountability mechanisms? So, from what I'm kind of understanding is that, you know, you have a lot of entities that may be siloed in nature, but anyway, your, your hope is to try to create some points of connection, right? To help then expand things. And so, I'm wondering, individuals who are, or entities that are part of this particular operation, when you're making those connections, which are hopefully benefiting them, I'm wondering, do y'all, the chamber, have sort of like aspirations or values that you're saying, we hope that the members can aspire to this thing? Because I, I think about, and I don't want to pick on Penn State, but you had mentioned Penn State. And what was it, the sensor development? And so, there's a need there, there's a product with the sensory stuff, but also the human capital, right, of individuals who may be localized here. We understand, okay, Penn State, you could utilize that, but you also need to do right by those employees because, again, they're needing to live here in our community, be able to afford, you know, have an affordable sort of like wage to live here and stuff like that. So, I'm wondering, you're, you're providing the service, you're benefiting these businesses. Are there like accountability measures that you're like, we're giving you this, but make sure you do right by these particular individuals?
Yeah, I think I would answer, there's two aspects of accountability that I'm thinking about when you, when you talk about that. One is accountability that we, that we take action and we get results. What are those results? How do we measure those results? So, as, as those responsible parties take on those actions, part of what they'll initially need to do is say, what does success look like and how do we measure success? So, that's accountability on a particular action or a particular organization. Overall accountability to move this plan forward, I believe, how do you do that from a community? It's not CBICC holding everybody accountable. But it is, we, we see that happening through our Economic Development Council, which, we have 50 members in that council right now. So, it's, it is a broad and diverse group of community members that, as Todd mentioned, covers every industry and aspect, small, large, government, educational, regional partners. And that group is going to be responsible for making sure we are moving forward. So, the accountability from that group, that's really what we're looking for. We're looking for them to help provide the vision and to provide the accountability that we are, we are making progress. And so, that's how I would look at accountability. I think, you know, in terms of individual accountability from organizations, I would say, you know, if we focus on Penn State, yeah, their breadth and touch on almost everything we do, and the importance of sitting down with Dr. Bendapooti and her commitment to economic development, to our community, to this plan, fully endorsing it and fully being there to say they support it, helps float down to provide that accountability across many, many of these actions and many of the things you're talking about.
And the last piece, I was thinking like just tangibly, what are we as the board sort of doing to help push this forward? And so, Amy, you might be the better area, but I answered.
Yeah, so, one of the things that we talked about this morning at the manager's breakfast was really, we haven't had a comprehensive plan for economic development in a very long time. We've talked about it, it's something that in my previous position, we talked about a lot with the other municipalities. But we never had this, right? And we've never had this piece to sort of move forward together. We all move forward in different ways, and we still have individual needs. Every municipality is completely different, and everybody has different needs, and that doesn't discredit this. But I think some of what we need to do, I'm not a big believer in doing a plan and then putting it on the shelf and not doing anything with it, right? I'm a doer, I think you all know that. And I'm a big believer in, let's take this plan, and once a year, let's get the municipalities together and say, okay, we need to be looking at X in this recommendation, and what can we do collectively that helps us get where we need to go, but doesn't hurt anybody individually, right? That's the goal. So, I think there are some things we can all work together on, and I think the discussion we had this morning was great because we talked a lot about the comprehensive plan that the Center Region is doing. And we talked a lot about putting this as a chapter in that comprehensive plan. So that somewhere it's encapsulated that we support the goals in this plan. This doesn't mean, you know, that we're going to give CBICC $100 million next year to go out and do these things. This just means that we're going to try to work and use what we have within our infrastructure, within the Center Region and the county, the people, to try to move this forward. And I will say that, you know, during the pandemic, we started the Helping Happy Valley Initiative because we were very concerned about the small businesses not surviving, right? So, some of the pieces that are mentioned in the plan are things that were talked about back in 2020 that just never came to fruition, fruition, because we didn't have the people behind it. So, having the plan, having the support of the elected officials in the county, and having the people behind it to do some of these things is going to move us light years ahead, right? There used to be a time, I remember it, you know, not too many years ago, when everybody just kind of accepted that Penn State was our economic driver. And then things happened that made people go, maybe Penn State, maybe we shouldn't put all of our eggs in one basket. It's not unlike my hometown, which put all of its bags of eggs in the Hershey Foods basket years ago, and then realized that wasn't the great idea. So, they've diversified over the years, and they have an economic development plan down there. So, I think there are a lot of things we can do, but I think it's more than just, you know, lip service. It's making sure every year we're working towards an end game. It's that prioritization exercise, having buy-in from the elected officials in the county, of course, because you guys set the policy, right? And then moving forward with the plan.
I think you can also be part of the accountability as well. I think, you know, in holding us accountable, holding the community accountable for, for actions. So, you know, regular reports back to you on what's, what's the progress? And being able to ask questions about how we're making progress, and maybe suggestions on ways that we can, we can improve on that. So, I think that's, that's important. As I mentioned, this community plan, I think it's important as a board, what we're hoping for is that, is that support, that foundational support that lifts this plan to a higher level. And so, I think those are a couple of ways that, as a board, you can, you can support this moving forward.
Thank you.
I guess it's my question. Perfect timing. This morning, I was at a meeting with the Community Diversity Group who, you're a topic, you were the topic. And my question, and you hit it right on the nose, was housing and transportation. You talked about the airport. We're talking about, I know quite a few of us have been talking about Amtrak. How do we get our students that are going from here to Philadelphia or New York? You know, we got to go to Lewistown, you know? And then how can we get a shuttle to get us there and work with Amtrak? So, that's one option that a group of us are working with Penn State and looking forward to moving that avenue. You've got the Megabus that will be probably looking for a new location soon. So, that's something that may be on your agenda. My question, and we talk about a community plan, I want to make sure when we talk about a community plan, it's diversity. People say diversified, but usually it is not inclusive of diversity. So, as you're moving forward. So as you're moving forward, because for Patton, taking the first step, you've got a chair and a vice chair are the first, you know, leading the way. So, you know, you talked about Nalini, Dr. Nalini, um, Krishna Kudi. And we're, we're making strides in our municipalities that you have a diverse community of elected officials. And we're hearing from our constituents that were quiet before, you know? We're here, see us. So as you're moving forward, please keep it in mind, like, if you're talking community plans to involve, um, organizations like not, like the Community Diversity Group and others, to hear exactly, um, some of the issues that they are, um, dealing with. I'm, I'm also looking at, you talked about one of the number one key of, of housing. I, I know for Todd, I know you probably looked long and hard to, to get here, you know? And I, we hear the complaints from teachers, you know, are, that can't live here. I'm looking at my township manager who was looking and couldn't find a house here. So when you're talking about, um, employment and, and housing and living here, all those components, we want to be at the table.
Yep.
We really want to be at the table. So hear us, see us, and, um, I'm looking forward to, um, working. I know this board is looking forward to working toward the collaboration, you know? And I know Amy will keep us abreast of what's going on. And the door is open for you to come back anytime to, to see how we can help and move forward.
Great.
So if my board has had the opportunity to look at the proclamation, a resolution, I'm sorry. Are there any questions before I take a vote?
Elliot has his hand up.
Elliot, okay.
I'll move the motion, but one area that I haven't heard discussed yet, but I think you're, one I'm including.
Elliot, talk to the mic, thank you.
I'm going to talk to the mic, because otherwise you can't hear me. Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right, okay. We've talked about local government, we've talked about the businesses, but I haven't heard much about our state and federal officials who we, we work with in, in Pennsylvania. And we've heard different candidates talking about that they want to increase, increase housing and increase small business help. And let's put the, put their feet to the fire. If we have, if we're ready to go with our local legislators, then we can get some of that done. And they're going to be very important in this, and some of them serve our own community and, and adjacent communities. Let's talk to them all.
Well, that's an excellent point, and we, we, we haven't talked a lot about our state elected officials, which we have, you know, five representatives for our county, two senators and three state representatives, who we have, are in constant communication with. They're aware of this plan, we've been able to brief a few of them on the plan, but haven't briefed them all. But all are supportive of this in moving forward and having those conversations about economic development. And then our federal officials, particularly, uh, Congressman Thompson, we've, we've had a lot of interaction with him. In fact, I just got an email from him today asking to come to, to Belfond in October and talk about, uh, economic development, what we've got going on in the county and what our needs are. So, uh, that engagement, uh, is there, it needs to be ongoing. And then, you know, our, their help and assistance in, uh, moving the needle on Harrisburg is absolutely critical, and, and we recognize that and we'll, we'll continue to, to foster that. So that's a great, that's a great point, thank you.
Elliot, I might have Supervisor McGruder read the prop, the resolution.
Uh, so, uh, Patent Township Center County, Pennsylvania, Resolution Number 2024-10, Adopting the Center County Economic Development Strategic Plan. Whereas the Patent Township Board of Supervisors recognized the importance of fostering a strong economy in both the township and greater Center County area. And whereas the township has been a supporter and investor in regional economic development efforts spearheaded by the Chamber of Business and Industry of Center County. And whereas the township has been involved in collaborative efforts with C I, B I C C to create a comprehensive Center County Economic Development Plan. And whereas the township is committed to working with the chamber, Center County and other regional municipalities to implement the goals and objectives of the Economic Development Plan for the betterment of the economy and citizens of Center County. Now and therefore be it resolved that the township adopts and supports the Center County Economic Development Plan. Resolve this day of something?
September 11th.
September 11th, 9/11, uh, 2024.
Thank you.
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? Resolution 2024-10 is adopted. Gentlemen, thank you for your time and your effort and looking forward to working with you.
Great, thank you, thank you for your time today.
Thank you very much.
Thank y'all set me up. Resolve this day of, I don't know, what's today's date?
All right, next on the agenda is discussion on the new cog trash con- contract, and Amy, you can go.
So we have Shelley Mato here from the cog, and I have to give Shelley a huge shout out and a debt of gratitude because she came from 3:00 to 5:00 today
Oh, my goodness.
and met with about 20 of our residents. And, uh, Mike Tilk was also here and Amy Scherf from the Center County Recycling and Refuge Authority, and answered, uh, folks' questions and listened to their concerns about the trash contract. So I really appreciate Shelley being here, and now this has been a long day for her, but she's going to give you an update on the contract, answer any questions that you might have. And just a reminder to residents that are watching this, you have to select your cart by September 30th, or they will automatically give you the largest cart. So if you have a, say, want to have a say in that, make sure you make that selection by the 30th. So Shelley?
Shelley, thank you, I know it's been a long day for you, but we truly appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you for having me. I just wanted to give you a really brief update. So you probably saw the postcards that went out, um, uh, as of, and we, they didn't go to everyone. A lot of the HOAs, COAs, and, uh, property management companies that manage like a lot of rentals, they removed their residents from the list of, that were getting the postcards because they are going to choose for them. And so, um, we sent them to about 15,500 households. And as of, uh, uh, 5 o'clock, we had about 5,255, um, people have chosen their carts. So we're over a third, feeling pretty good. Just a reminder what the prices are and, and how that's working. And I know you've seen this information before, but it's one of the things that we're trying to really get out in front of people. Next one. And again, that, um, that we're going with a new hauler, um, people's butchering of that name is pretty funny. I get a lot of, um, burger master. Does that come from like Frost and Snowman or something? Getting a lot of that, um, um, what to do about the hauler-owned carts, how often do we build, things like that. So a lot of that, we're just trying to get that information out in front of them as much as possible. And then they are starting to ask questions. Some of them ask questions about the changes in bulk waste. That's not our focus right now, we'll do that outreach, um, in the next, you know, in 2025. Right now, we just need to get the carts ordered, because it's 17,400 carts. So we need to get that order placed, so that's, that's our real focus right now. So I'm doing these meet your car events, tonight was the first one, we'll see how they go. I thought it was, it was good. And some of the common questions we're receiving, um, what are the actual sizes? So I've got some of the measurements on my website, because I don't think the ones on the poster are accurate, and they didn't measure the depth, which I think is really important, back to back around that wheel. Do I buy or rent the carts? I guess that wasn't clear enough. Why is there so little difference in the cost of service between these sizes? And the reason is because it's just the difference in the tipping fee for the amount of trash that fits in each, and at $84 a ton, that's a really small amount. Why are we switching to automated cart collection? I get that question from a lot of people, we talk that through. What are my options if I always have more than six or seven trash bags? I have to admit that I was a little surprised by the amount of people who asked me that. And I try to talk with them about how we, you know, are, are the things, are the ways I can help inform them about ways to reduce that, them of waste, because that's a lot of waste. Can I use my own cart? The answer is no. What can I do with my old trash can? After the contract starts, we will pick up, um, old cans, plastic and metal, and recycle those as much as possible. Must I have an account or can I self-haul? And I hope we all know the answer to that question. Is recycling included? Can I opt out of recycling? And again, we, we talk that through. Will they still retrieve my refuse at my door? And this has been a big question for people. The contract specified that they had to offer, um, free at-door collection, not free collection, but no additional cost for at-door collection for anyone who is eligible under the ADA guidelines. And also, we added in our own policy quite a while ago that it also includes people with age-related safety concerns. I usually process those, wave the requests through my office, I'm, I'm tracking about, I'm a 35 right now. So not all that many. People are, a lot of people are paying the extra fee for the, either the convenience, they don't, they have a long driveway, they don't want to take it down the driveway, they don't feel like getting up that early, or because they are physically not able to get it down there. So I try to help them make that determination, and if it's the second of those, then I help them with that fee waiver we talked about. This is something we will do for you, so that you are safe. And, um, but that the hauler will provide door service for people for an additional fee. And it's about the same, it's the same fee as what they're, what they're charging now. So that was not a piece we required them to give us in the contract, but it had so many requests that it's something we decided at last week's transition meeting. I'd asked them to give me a price, it'll be an extra $10 a month on top of the largest cart size. So that's the price they came up with. I think that's fair, and, um, and it's, and it's good that they're willing to make that, that offer, so. And then that's answers, what do I do about my long driveway? If they have a long driveway, they don't know where they can put their cart, or they live on a lane that's long and there's three or four or five houses on that, we're sending the hauler out to do site visits on each of those. And so they're going to do the site visit and determine what they want to do about those locations. We knew right from the start that cart collection would never work for 100% of the residences. So we're still working on that, I've given them my first round of, you need to go visit these sites. The other thing we're giving them is a list of, um, smaller roadways and, and really steep ones where we often have encountered difficulty in the winter, especially if the collection is at the beginning of the day. I've given them that list and said, these, you probably could, would be better off doing later in the afternoon when it's gotten warm enough, and the township roads have been able to clean them, things like that. So got that out to them too. And then we're going to do with my yard waste, and we talk about the different options for their yard waste and how to handle that. And a few other questions, you know, just how will we be invoiced? And I explained about the county authority taking over the billing process. Some conversations about why did the rates increase? That was more at the beginning of this whole round, and much less so now. Did residents have any input? We talked about, I talked to them about the survey, and I talked to them about, um, sort of the representative democratic process where, yeah. Will my auto pay continue? The answer is no, waste management will have to shut off that auto pay. They cannot give us, or when we want them, when the residents want them, give us anyone's financial information. So we have, um, are putting something in place where we can make sure that they've closed all those accounts and they've canceled our auto pays and will get information out to people who have set up the auto pay with your bank, how to make sure that that is changed as well. Why is bulk waste collection changing? We talk about that a lot. Can I pay monthly or annually? And then a lot of people from HOA are like, I didn't get my postcard. So we, we have those conversations, um, and how are we going to handle that? All right, just some important dates, um, September 30th, last day to collect carts. February to March, the carts will be delivered. We're working on how to, how to manage, uh, lists of households where they aren't there at that time of the year, because we do have a number of snowbirds and things like that. So we're working on, on attaining that list and getting it a working list so that it's not delivered to an empty house. The start of the new contract is April 1st. April to June, we'll be collecting those old cans. Each cart is going to come with a brochure taped to the inside with all that information. It'll have those dates, phone numbers to call for, wheel faults off, things like that. And then also in 2025, there's the open switch period. So we have one time in the first year that residents can, um, switch cart sizes free. Other than that, if they choose to switch after that, or a second time, it's $20 each time, except if someone purchases a new home, a new homeowner can switch the cart size for free because there's a cart left there. So that's what I have, what questions do you have?
Okay, Supervisor McGruder, I'll see you first.
Uh, I was just about to say, go home. Very clear, I don't, I don't have any questions.
Any, any other board members?
I will say that I did make my selection, though.
You did?
I should, don't, don't quote me on that, but my wife should have sent that in.
Yeah, right. Supervisor Abrams, have any question?
No.
Supervisor Whitman?
I'm going to second what Sue Tom said. Just go home.
And I'm, I'm scratching because we went out and filmed our third video today. And on the way in, people downstairs knew the Bs were in that column, didn't put a B sign on there, and they just attacked.
Where?
Wait, where? At the cog building.
Oh, jeez.
Oh, my God, what?
And they just attacked, I, I, like, that's nasty.
Get her home. One of the cruisers, take her home, gee.
It's the cost of making a video, there we go.
Shelley, um, I'm, I'm, I'm going to let you run. Is it possible, I can give you a call, because I, I need to talk to one of my residents who is a disabled vet on, you know, about his, about our HOA and how they are selecting the carts, so.
Yeah, your HOA is choosing us, right?
I haven't heard, so we'll be on it.
Did you get a postcard?
Nope.
Then I would guess that your HOA is choosing for you.
All right, so I need to get on them.
Either your HOA or the property management company, a lot of them
Are choosing.
pulled all of them, and they just want us to look for all of them.
Yeah, well, we'll, we'll, we'll see about that, thank you. Go home, thank you for your time here and our residents, and we truly appreciate the time. Go home, take care of yourself.
Yeah, but seriously, I just want to add, um, so I know Amy used to work in this field, and she knows the detail. I've been with Shelley, I mean, I've been with her, I see her once a month. And, but, you know, I read all the stuff that she goes through, it's, it is pretty amazing. So I'm, I'm just, I'm very impressed, I'm eternally grateful, not just to be able to work with you, but for our citizens and the fact that trash is like, eh, it happens.
the fact that trash is like, eh, it happens. And I know that the reason it happens is because Shelley absorbs all of the bumps and the questions and the...
Yeah, and when you don't have to think about your trash, that's when we're being successful.
Yeah, yeah, so.
I'm hoping we get to the point in a few months where people are no longer thinking about the trash again.
Yeah.
That it's automatic and they're comfortable with it.
Well, we thank you for your efforts and, you know, getting beat up and questions and please take your time and go home.
Stop by bees.
Take off tomorrow and tell them I said so.
Oh, no, I can't do that. I have a budget here.
Oh, that's right. I'll see you tomorrow. I'll, I'll, I'll see you tomorrow, so.
Keep those bees away from us at the budget.
Yes, please.
Don't come in the back door.
At the budget. I guarantee you, I won't.
Go into the cog back door at all costs.
I go when the door closes to the general port room so I can walk at least a mile of steps.
Back door, the back parking lot, it takes more to go, don't go in there.
Well, thank you.
Don't we pay a lot of money to the cog?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, we do.
So they can get some bee mitigation over there. Tell them, tell them to put some signs up.
Bee City, U.S.
Bee City. Okay, thank you.
Bee City.
Next on the agenda is the proposed ordinance 2024-642, amending the Center Region Rental Housing and Building Safety Code. Amy, I think this is you?
Yes, this is me. So it was discovered by our staff that when we adopted the Center Region Rental Housing and Building Safety Property Maintenance Code last year, Chapter 11, which is the one that deals with emergency alarms, was left out of the language. There was a lot of discussion back, right before I actually got to the township about that section because the code agency had some language they wanted to put in for the nuisance alarms. We have our own language for nuisance alarms that we wanted to keep using and the chief had been involved in those discussions. So what we've asked the code agency to do and what Mr. Schneider did for us was to draft an amendment that adds the rest of Chapter 11, which is the permitting for emergency alarms and other things, back in, but leaves the nuisance alarm section out so that we can continue to enforce that locally. So if you're okay with the ordinance as drafted and included in your packet, we'd like to schedule the public hearing for September tw- twenty-fifth so that we can get this adopted.
Okay. Are there any questions from the board? Can Amy move forward on posting?
So move.
All right. Amy, so we post that for a public hearing on the twenty-fifth. Okay. Next on the agenda is the proposed ordinance 2024-643 prohibiting parking on Waddle Road.
So as you all are aware, Masters Boulevard is now complete and the road is open. And we want to take a proactive step, the police chief and the director of Public Works Operations have asked for this, that we add in parking restrictions on the western side of Waddle Road from the intersection with Tofftree's Avenue and Masters Boulevard to the interchange with I-99. We just think that's going to help with site distance issues and also keep us from having folks parking there long-term or short-term because it's not an appropriate place really for parking. So again, we want to set this up for a public hearing on September twenty-fifth if you're okay with it.
Okay. It's the board's pleasure?
Yep.
Okay, Amy set that up for September the twenty-fifth meeting. Okay. Next is the proposed ordinance 2024-644, amending the stormwater management ordinance to be consistent with the Department of Environmental Protection 2022 model stormwater management ordinance. Amy, this is you again.
Yeah, so I'll start this and then if you have questions, Michelle, who is the expert on this, is sitting at the table from them. And then we have to do certain activities to satisfy that requirement. So under the permit that we have, we have to make changes to our stormwater ordinance prior to September thirtieth, 2024. It includes changes to the, to achieve consistent, consistency with some of the state's best management practices and minimum control measures. I will tell you that the MS4 partners, which Michelle is a part of, drafted the ordinance and everyone around the region, all of the partners are adopting this ordinance. So if you have questions, Michelle can answer them. All I did was format the thing into ordinance format. So, and again, if you don't have questions and you're okay with it, it just needs to go September twenty-fifth for a public hearing.
Okay. What's the board's pleasure? Is it okay to move it to a public hearing? Right. Michelle, you're good. All right, we're scheduling that for September the twenty-fifth meeting. All right. Next on agenda is Public Safety Monthly Meeting. Chief Jolly.
All right, thank you very much. A copy of my August report was included in your materials. You'll see that our officers stopped two-hundred-and-eighty vehicles on traffic stops, wrote twenty-nine citations, two parking tickets, and handled fifteen criminal arrests. And our bike patrol was active with the nice weather, thirty miles, fifty-one business checks, three incidents handled, two parking tickets and two vacation home checks. Under department notes, there was a thirty-four-year-old female who was arrested for delivery of a controlled substance. She was selling oxycodone pills. Twenty-two-year-old male and a twenty-seven-year-old male were charged in the same incident for felony forgery and theft by deception. They used fraudulent identification at a local business and obtained four thousand dollars worth of merchandise from that using the fake information. They then attempted to do the same thing in Blair County and the Logan Township Police Department apprehended them and recovered some of the merchandise that we had stolen from our store. So it worked out really well and worked with our good, our law enforcement partners in Blair County as well. And then we also had a thirty-seven-year-old male who was charged with misusing the nine-one-one system. Obviously, nine-one-one is for emergencies only and the individual was contacting the nine-one-one center and making statements, none of which were related to any emergencies. Three, people were arrested for retail theft. Four, for driving under the influence. Our officers served eleven warrants of the twelve that they attempted and we conducted eleven vacation home checks in the month. We did use force during one incident in the month of August. Our officers were dispatched to a residence where an individual, a male who was heavily intoxicated. When they arrived on scene, the male was blocking the door, not allowing the person who had called us to come out and speak with the officers and kind of work through the situation. So the officers eventually did grab the intoxicated male by his arms and led him outside of the residence. He was handcuffed then outside of the residence without further incident. He was, he was transported to the hospital for treatment for his intoxication. Nobody on scene was injured. At the conclusion of the investigation, he was, ended up being charged for DUI and for harassment. Under community relations, we had a busy month again. Detective Salade assisted with the girls' week out of Camp Cadet. Just like at Boys Week, Officer Snyder and Graff went out and did a canine demonstration for the girls' week though. Officer Tuskich had a really busy month. He assisted in conducting an active shooter drill for the staff at the village of Penn State. And then again, it was very busy in, in the schools as they prepared for the new school year. He provided a school bus driver safety training for the state college area school district drivers. He attended the staff back-to-school training for SCASD staff. He also gave his annual safety presentation to the staff at Park Forest Middle School, which includes Run High Flight for all the employees there. And then he also attended the back-to-school night at Park Forest Middle School as well. He and I, and we have a photo of it coming up here just shortly, participated in the Grange Fair Parade. I had never attended that and was amazed with how many people were there. It was fantastic. It was really a great event and got a lot of support from our community over there for law enforcement. It was really nice. And our officers, of course, with the Penn State move-in, were very busy. A lot of the officers were rolling walk and talks in our college housing complexes, welcoming the students back. And then also, they were very present in our big box stores, which obviously we see a very big influx in, in the visits that we see to Target and Walmart and Wagnons and places like that. Under training and department activities, our officers attended tactical response team training. Officer Berhowsky attended the three-day emergency vehicle operation course as a new officer. Again, they have a three-day course and then subsequently every, every two years, they have a update, which Officer Finocchio did attend. Officer Snyder and Canine Graff attended, completed their two training days that they have to do every month. And then in addition to that, they did a canine sweep of a drug rehabilitation facility. They were called to sniff a vehicle on a traffic stop for the state college police department. And then they participated in an annual tactical response team readiness exercise with a tracking scenario. I attended also the, the tactical readiness team readiness exercise, assisted with the Bellefonte Police Department as they interviewed and hired or are in the process of hiring a couple of police officers. So I sat in on their interview panel. I attended a football planning meeting, obviously very busy with, with the football as we had our first home game this past weekend. So kudos to Penn State, they do a pretty good job of organizing all the law enforcement in the area and making sure that we have a good plan and make sure, ensure the safety of all the attendees at the games. I also attended a meeting with the Office of Attorney General related to organized crime, I'm sorry, organized retail theft crimes. I attended the campus community immunity meeting and then also the Center County Chiefs meeting. I received a couple of really, really nice letters. The first one was from an individual, unfortunately, our officers responded to a cardiac arrest event where her husband did pass away. However, she sent a very, very nice note, the wife of the, the individual, talking about Officer Berhowsky and about how, as their officers were there and EMS was there, how he spoke with her and distracted her, was empathetic, was kind, and he felt that, that she felt that he actually honestly really cared about her and was, was taking care of her in the moment. She felt terrible because she never grabbed his name. And ironically enough though, a couple of weeks later, she, while driving, had a thought and wanted to write something down, so she pulled into a parking lot here in the township and as she was writing her note that she wanted to remind herself, Officer Berhowsky, again, just happened to be driving by, saw the vehicle and saw her and thought maybe that somebody was having a medical emergency because her head was kind of slumped down. So stopped to check on, on the, the individual shortly after their, their initial interaction. He said, you look really familiar. And she was like, you were at my house about two weeks ago. So again, just thanked him profusely for his kindness the previous week. And she even mentioned they chat a lot with friends. So it was just really nice for her to share that experience with Officer Berhowsky. Again, vacation home checks, we, we are always happy to provide that, that service to the community. Just an individual who we wanted to acknowledge Sergeant Schaefer for his persistence in watching their, their property while they are away. We do have an online citizen commendation. We really don't receive very many of these. I don't think it's well-known that it's on our website, but we did get one here. It was for Hunter Brooks, one of our new officers who's been with us for under a year. Person had a disabled vehicle out on Interstate ninety-nine and Hunter Brooks happened upon them. They just talked about how he did a great job protecting them, turning the emergency lights on the vehicle to make sure that they were safe and helping them out with a very stressful situation. So they wanted to thank Officer Brooks for his hard work. And then I believe we received this on our Facebook page. So it was a really nice note that somebody, it was Officer Barzell, just happened to be driving by a local business, a car repair business, and noticed at about one in the morning that a car was sitting there and all the lights were on on the car. He thought that would be odd, pulled in, ran the registration and found out, sure enough, it belonged to somebody locally in Patton Township. Reached out to them at one AM and said, hey, I'm here and your car lights are on. And so they were just really appreciative and thought that he really went above and beyond reaching out to them and they went up and turned the lights off. So it was really a nice, nice note that they sent us as well. Can't see us in the car, but that would be myself and Officer Tuskich in the parade. But you gotta, I mean, you gotta get the whole thing. So I think at the Grange Fair Parade, we, like I said, we had a fantastic time. The next photo is of Officer Tuskich and a young man who has become friends with many of the officers. Officer Tuskich knows him from being in schools. Over again, at the, the Grange Fair Parade. And then we have a couple of photos of my last report and then this month, talked about Center County Camp Cadet. So on the right side, second one in from the right is Detective Salade. So she was a camp counselor out at Camp Cadet for the week, helping out, out there. And then the next photo, you have Sergeant Schaefer kneeling in the center. And then as Larry's pointing out, Officer Mitch Snyder, who is the canine handler out of Boys Week for Camp Cadet. So very nice event that we were always really happy and pleased to be, be a part of. Lastly, just our record list of calls. We had four-hundred-and-thirty-two calls for service in the month of August. That's up from the four-hundred-and-four that we handled in July. Sixty of those were traffic calls and then fifty-four were helping safety EMS assists. And then I would be remiss if I did not mention our Patton Township Safety Fair. It is this Saturday, the fourteenth, so hopefully it's on your schedule and on your calendars. But from ten AM until three PM, we'll be in the tar, in the parking lot between Target and Kohl's, the empty parking lot there. Again, it's just a fantastic event. We really want to thank the Happy Valley Business Association for all their assistance. You'll probably start hearing some advertising on the radio with Officer Tuskich and Matt Naby, who is the president of the association. But it's, if you've never been to it, we really would encourage you to come out for the young and the young and hard police fire EMS, first responders there, and then many of the business, business community in that township and around the Center Region are there as well. Great opportunity to interact with first responders and our local business community. So please come out. It looks like the weather's going to be beautiful, so we're really pleased about that and looking forward to it. That's all I have.
Any questions for Chief? Chief, we're looking forward to it on Saturday and the weather's going to be great, so.
Looks it, yeah, we're looking forward to it.
All right. Next on the agenda is Public Works. We have no items. Next on the agenda is Engineering, Planning and Zoning. The Planning Commission Report. Ellen Foreman.
So we don't have Ellen here tonight, but I will tell you that you're going to see most of the Planning Commission at your meeting on the twenty-fifth to discuss the workforce housing regulations. And also, they advanced a bunch of plans, so you will be seeing much of what they did at their meeting at your meeting on the twenty-fifth.
Okay. The next one, the agenda is the Inter Municipal Zoning Implementation Agreement. So Amy, is that you?
Yeah, and we actually have Jenna Worgo, who's the principal planner from the cog and is our planner, on Zoom. So I'm going to tap Jenna if you have any questions, but I'll kind of kick this off. So Patton and College Townships have an inter-municipal zoning implementation agreement. The agreement's primary purpose is to allow contiguous municipalities within the Center Region to cooperate in planning for and providing zoning districts for land uses agreed upon within the agreement. So specifically, our agreement permits Patton and College to cooperate in planning for and providing districts for industrial and multifamily uses. So the agreement stipulates that, or mandates that each municipality must notify the other of any proposed zoning changes or plans involving these uses. This ensures that both municipalities can monitor and track the amount of industrial and residential development within their areas. So College is considering permitting indoor recreation facilities as a permitted use in their general zoning, industrial zoning district. And they are asking the township to provide any input that they might have on this proposed change. Their council is going to continue discussion at upcoming meeting, tentatively scheduled for the month of September. We did give you the letter from Lindsay Scope, who's their principal planner, and also the copy of the inter-municipal agreement. Planning Commission discussed this at their meeting on Monday and supported their request. So we're just looking to see if you have any comments on the proposal, which we will then provide back to College Township ahead of their meeting.
Check that off. Any questions for Amy at this time?
I can see them.
Seeing none. Next on the agenda is the easement. Oh, I'm sorry, did I miss somebody? No? Any questions?
I thought Suton had a question.
You sure? Okay.
Should I have a question?
No.
All right. Move slow, you move, you lose. Easement on Meeks Lane Stormwater Project.
Okay, so again, I will kick this off and then Michelle is here and Betsy is here to answer any of the technical questions. So we're completing a stream bank stabilization project on Meeks Lane to comply with our pollution reduction plan requirement, meet the credit requirements mandated by DEP for MS4 permit. So construction on the project is expected to start in fall of 2024 with some plantings and additional work being completed in the spring of 2025. To move the project forward, we have to obtain an easement from the adjacent property owner to allow for the work to be completed. Michelle and Ken worked with the property owner, Josh, Josh Glance, to reach an agreement on the language. The language was provided by DEP and then reviewed by Betsy and the attorney for Mr. Glance. Mr. Glance is asking for reimbursement of his legal fees, up to two thousand dollars in exchange for the easement. We put a copy of the draft easement in your packet. I will tell you that I think we're still working out some minor language details within that easement, but we feel that it's out of position where you could approve it subject to those minor details being completed.
Okay. Any questions to the solicitor or to the town... Any questions to the solicitor or to the township manager at this time? Okay, if we have no questions, then can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second? Discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I have one general question. This arrangement seems very amicable. Is that typical for a request of an easement? I mean, it's good to see that. I know that there was, there was one in a nearby neighborhood that I think was proposed to go through somebody's yard and they didn't like it, so it actually went all the way around.
Yeah, I think generally where we can, we try to work with property owners and we try to get them to be as amicable as possible. I think this one has been much more and I give credit to Ken because Ken had an existing relationship with Mr. Glance, which helped with this process immensely.
Okay, so we're documented that it's passed.
Yes.
Yep, so pretty much it's just his out of pocket.
Yeah, I mean, he wasn't asking for anything other than, he just doesn't want it to cost him money to do that.
Totally makes sense. That's really nice. It's a nice when that happens. So thank you for that.
Okay. Thank you. Any more questions? Seeing none. Next on the agenda is Administration. The solar power purchasing legal fees. Amy, take it away.
I'm going to give this to Larry.
Larry?
So I'm, I'm going to take it.
Okay.
Don't, don't mess up. Don't mess up.
So this item deals with the solar power purchasing legal fees. And in case anybody's been under a rock, we've received some additional fees from, from the lawyers. I just want to take us back a little bit in history and talk about, back in February, I think in the one of the February meetings, we talked about having Betsy Dupuy be a representative for the group for the local government legal advice. And talk with the solicitor for the PPA, who is a person, who is a person that has knowledge with the PPAs. So we wanted to make sure, I think I said at that time, that I would not recommend we sign the PPA unless our solicitor, Betsy Dupuy, agreed with it. So we made that decision that we would contract Betsy to do that. Knowing as a public accountant that I always take a chance to take a rip at a lawyer. I'm sure I said, and we should expect some additional legal fees because lawyers don't do anything for free. I'm like accountants, we do free stuff. So, so now we have reached a point where Chris at Fager Drinker, who is the solicitor, has, has given us an update on his legal fees. That has caused a little bit of, of an uproar, though I don't, I'm not as upset as, as some other people are. I expected it to come. We, as a group, as a, as the working group, had made an agreement that we would pay legal fees up to $165,000 for the whole group, of which Patton Township is 1.2% of that. So we aren't talking about a lot when we're talking about $165,000. Twenty, $165,000, 20% of that, you know, it is not a whole lot. We paid most of those legal fees already. I'm sorry, not 20%, 2%. 2%. So we're only talking about total legal fees for us somewhere around less than $3,500 in total. So when you hear these numbers of the legal bills, you have to realize that's the whole pie. That's not our piece of the pie. Our piece of the pie is of the $165,000 is, is less than $3,500. So the invoices came on and there are more than the $165,000. So we have incurred the $165,000 plus we have incurred another $80,000, $83,000. It could have been higher, but the lawyer has given us, has rebated us some of his hours, about 83 hours to the tune of about $70,000. So right now, Patton Township, and I should add, there's still work being done. So there's still legal fees that I would expect that would come. And the estimate of that is another $30,000. So the 83 is going to go up to 110, okay? So we, we have a decision to make here at Patton Township. We have a number of decisions that are coming up. The decision to make tonight is, number one, do we pay the lawyer for all the work he's done with Betsy? In, in writing these, these, these agreements? Do we only pay the lawyer for up to the $165? And anything over the $165, which hasn't, we haven't approved yet, we say no? Or do we not want to pay the lawyer at all? My recommendation, because if you look at this, the worksheets that went out with the, the, with the agenda, including the $30,000, we're talking about paying another $2,233.95. I will go out on a limb and make a recommendation that this lawyer has worked in good faith for us. Betsy is, is, we're taking care of her side. This is the other side, the other lawyer. He's worked in good faith for us. I would recommend that we approve the $2,233.95 to pay this bill. Give the final products of the, of the agreements so that our next step could be to look at those, those final agreements and make a decision what we're going to do with those agreements. So if you do not have a problem, I would request that the board make a motion to, for me to pay the school district this $2,233.95 that they can forward to Fager Drinker, attorney's award.
I move that we authorize the payment of the amount just stated to the school district to cover the legal fees.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Elliot.
Elliot, I'm sorry.
I don't mind the, the final result of this of having to pay. But I greatly mind the fact that we had no warning of the specific amounts that that might be. It's sort of like you going to buy a car that's, that's $50,000 and that's what the dealer says. And you come back the next day to buy it and no, it's $80,000. If they'd told me when it was 50, that it was going to be 80, then I had, would have, would have based my decision on that. But I think you need to have notice.
I would, I would agree that it would have been nice to know what it would be. Though I, I, I hesitate to compare legal fees with a car. I agree with what you're saying, but I think legal, legal fees, accounting fees, you know, you ask somebody to do a, a project for you, you're paying them in an hourly basis. It's a little different than, you know, if you went to the car factory, you went to the Corvette factory in Kentucky and said, I want a Corvette. And they said, okay, we're going to sell you a Corvette for $50,000. And you say, great. And then as you're going through, waiting for this Corvette, you start adding, you know, I want golden seats in it and stuff like that. You're going to expect the, the, the pay for the additions that you add to it. That's more of a, I think we went back to him and said, there's some, there's some technical things with local government in Pennsylvania that weren't covered in these contracts. We need to cover them. We need you to go back renegotiate. So we cover these. So in, in my thought, it's not, it, it, we would have kept coming back, I think, with additional increase, increase, increase. I think that, that might have even got you to the point where you said, hey, when are you going to stop asking for more money? So I think we're towards the end here. We kind of know what the final product's going to be. I'm pretty confident with this number.
Supervisor Whitman?
Yeah, I just want to say I don't, I don't know all of the back and forths and in betweens with all of the contracts. But I heard Pam Adams describe all of them Monday night at the Borough Board Meeting because they had expressed the same concern. So I would actually ask, Betsy, can you give a little bit of a litany of what, and before she says that, I just want to say, what really impresses me is that this PPA is the first, perhaps at this point, the only project that has 11 entities and now in fact 10 entities. Pam Adams thinks that there might be one in Australia. I will also note that the, the contracts that we have worked, that lawyers have worked out are now being used as exemplars on a website that promotes power purchase agreement establishments. It's a nationwide website. So I think the element of unknown is so much greater. And if you want to use the car analogy, it would be if you're looking at the stock market and the price of a certain metal or an element or a chip is fluctuating on a 24-hour basis and changing the cost of the car. So that's maybe not even a good analogy, but it is, it's an extremely complex process. And Betsy, if you could even.
Well, let me be fair to all of you, and Amy's heard this. I didn't have a lot of conversations here. I, I think there's a lot of background between the players, the Prospect 14 lawyer and Direct Energy. I think there was some misdirection at one point that forced us to go back to FERC and look at some issues that we shouldn't have had.
And tell them what FERC is?
FERC is the Federal Regulatory Agency that manages, the original agreements, for all intents and purposes, were going to make you view the municipality's title holders to the power. So as the power came out of the system, you were going to have a temporary moment while, where you owned it. And because of that, under federal regulations, you would have to file a report every year and there would be an additional expense to do that and audit and so forth. And Mr. Brent knew that and, and said from the get-go, I think this is not the right way to do it. He was given a different path by the consultants and that was probably not a good thing to have done because that meant that agreements were written in a certain path and had to be rewritten. I don't disagree with, I, I've talked to the folks at Ferguson. I know there's, there's some heat over there about this. I think the county is, let me say to you, though, I think you all, and I, when I say all, I mean appointed officials, elected officials should walk away from this with the understanding that this is not how it needs to work in the legal business. If I entered into an engagement, and I do, with, with Fortune 500 companies, our firm does, and they give us a cap on our engagement, if we go over that cap, we're eating it. And I have, I have projects where I have to get a cap for a period of time and then go back and get an engagement. We have one, we've done seven engagement letters on. My concern here is that nobody's watching the till. And this is exactly what the big 100 law firms like Farish account on. You're just going to let them bill the crap out of you in ways that you would not allow a lawyer in Center Cali to do that. And that's not, that's not appropriate. And I, and shame on this individual for not coming back to you and, and having those, not you, but to Randy, to others, to have these conversations. It, it is, it is incumbent in the process to ask your professional to give you an estimate for work that's done. And I am asked at all, all types of engagements, even in litigation, which as far as I'm concerned, is the hardest thing to estimate because you never know what the other side's going to do. So, you know, the learning part of this is, let's, let's get, get on, let's move, move forward with this. I am a bit concerned that there seems still to be a lot of push to get things out the door, although I heard the meeting yesterday or today, yes, today. There's a little pullback. And what I mean by that is, you shouldn't be taking this issue or piecemealing these documents. You should have a complete package of documents that come out. This cost sharing agreement should have been amended and should, is going to be amended. You need to work out who's going to have the agreement with Green Sky. Because we do a lot of things in government where we don't quite put all the pieces. We know what it is and we're all okay with it, but we don't quite paper it. And the minute you get, which you will get, a right to know request, somebody is going to find the things that have not been papered. And they're going to go on one of the local radio shows and they're going to talk about it. And there are folks, primarily staff, quite frankly, in this process that have taken a lot of heat for things that really aren't their fault, right? And so we all need to be a little more cognizant of that as we do this. And I think, you know, as a comfort level, I think this should be seen as a learning project, right? So that when a project like this comes along, and I agree with you, Betsy, I think it's the wave of the future to try to do things together. But COG probably should be the one that runs the ship and really forces a process on everybody. And so that you don't have folks now out there asking questions. But I'm saying to all of you as the leaders, right, you're going to go to meetings, including COG, and you're going to have some vocal people in the room. Some of your fellow elected officials have been quite vocal. You need to be saying to them, we need to move this forward, right? We need, instead of focusing on what, what could have been and should have been, let's get it done and let's make notes for the next time. So that we get it, we do it better the next time. Because I, I don't know, I Monday morning quarterback this a little bit myself because I can tell you that I didn't have more than 10 hours.
Yeah.
In any of that, what I have done is split between three people. And so for him to have 100 hours, because I've done the math, I'm sort of thinking, well, then that's a lot of conversations with a lot of other people and that doesn't include me.
Yeah.
And so that, and I'm not saying he didn't do the hours.
Maybe even 183 hours.
Yeah, and I'm not saying he didn't do the hours, but I, I think, you know, one of the, one of the things is if you're not really tight on this, you know, I can spend a half an hour on something, the Meeks Lane agreement. There are lawyers at Farage Drinker that would have spent four hours on that. I, there's no way, I don't know how you spend four hours, but I'm telling you, I've seen the bills. So I think you have to go into these engagements, especially when you want to get specialized counsel by saying, we understand your, your need, we accept that you have all these skills and you know what, for that purpose, and believe me, some of you have met Kevin Garber in my office, who's an environmental lawyer. He's been told this, right, you're a really good environmental lawyer, but that doesn't mean I'm going to pay your rate for four hours when you should be doing it for an hour, right? I mean, that's the way it works. So it's a learning lesson. It's, that's what it is. And, and I think it's a great thing. I, I sent an email to Amy today, she was, and Larry was copying on it. I think we're close. We have a closing agenda. We've got a few things to button up. I'm waiting for the final agreements, but you know, you're going to get a package. It's going to have a resolution. It's going to set it all forward for you so that when you approve it, it's, then it's off your plate, right? You're going to prove it conceptually. And I think in addition to this fee issue, I think it's also that you're supposed to confirm your percentage or what you're taking.
That's correct. That's correct. We'll confirm our percentage and sign the agreements all at the same time.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think part of the percentage issue, you know, the, the problem in this whole process has been a little bit of a chicken and egg, right? There are things you can't do. There are things you can't do or final, your agreements you can't finalize until you've answered certain questions.
Correct.
And we're getting, we're getting almost to that point. Yeah.
Yeah. And, and I didn't wanna muddy the waters with the discussion of the usage, you know, percentage. At the same time, we were talking about the, the...
Legal fees. The legal fees and the sharing. But, but with all due respect, as far as I'm concerned, and I'm saying this as a lawyer, you, that is, you staff, whether you're here at the county or somewhere else, you're the ones that are gonna determine that. I mean, they're, you're gonna, the board's gonna accept it as a recommendation.
Right.
But it's not like it was individual board members are looking at that usage information and making those decisions. So as far as I'm concerned, you can represent that issue. I think, and I really didn't think you necessarily had to come to this group and say, we gotta spend a little more money, 'cause I think they would understand that. But I think it's good for you all to have the background 'cause this is not the first, well, this is not the last conversation, let me put it that way. Because there are some individuals who are pretty sadly charged up about this and I understand why, for exactly what Elliot said. We shouldn't be surprised. There should have been communication all along. And that's, you know...
And unfortunately, from the staff here at Pat's touch, and the, as a member of the project management team, we were kinda held away from, I have never spoken to the lawyer.
No, no one has, but me and Randy.
No one has, but you, right.
Yeah.
And we were kinda held back from that, maybe for a good reason because if we all started calling them, then there's a lot more hours that could build.
Right, right, right.
Okay? And I understand that. However, the transparency, and I think in the meeting we had on August twenty-eighth for the working group, Randy Bryan admitted, took, you know, fell on his sword and said, yeah, I should've been more transparent.
And Larry, I remember a conversation, Betsy will probably remember, maybe Elliot, I don't know if you guys were on the board, very early on in this process in which you said, we're gonna hire this counsel, I think is when you approved hiring this counsel. And you had made the recommendation to the group that this attorney engaged with the other solicitors. And even if that had happened in a fifteen, twenty-minute, half an hour conversation, that would've gotten you off the ground better.
One of the things that we learned through this process is that we should've brought the municipal solicitors in a lot earlier.
Only, only as much as to engage with this individual, to have outlined the issues so that before that individual went and negotiated agreements, they understood. The only reason you agreed and Ferguson and Col, or the county to bring me in is because at that juncture, you had eight different lawyers in the county looking, I may be off by a few, one way or the other, looking at these agreements and asking questions. One of them wrote a twelve-page letter. Now that entity is no longer in the, is no longer in the mix. But it didn't really matter. The issues were so far and wide-reaching because those individuals had not been engaged from the get-go to identify the critical things that they thought were important.
And it's not speaking out of school to say this because it was stated in, in the January working group meeting of which you were there. And that was, oh, these, these agreements are done. We're not, we're not looking at them anymore. They're done. And that was never my understanding of how it was gonna work. Because as I said, I wasn't gonna approve them unless, they're legal. I mean, I could look at the numbers all day long, but I'm not gonna approve any legal documents. I never have in any other jobs I had. I'm not gonna do that here. So for them to just basically say, here's, here's, here's these, here's these documents, go ahead and sign them, that, that was never gonna happen. So we should have, you know, I think it was, you know, in their mind, the fact that they could've handled it all themselves was, was incorrect. That was never gonna happen.
Well, it, it didn't think, they were not thinking about, including this, the lawyer, who, who does this work specially but doesn't represent governmental entities, doesn't practice in Pennsylvania, wasn't aware of the fact that you're gonna go to public meetings and people are gonna ask you for things. And so there were a lot of those little nuances that we could've probably filtered out earlier in the process before we got to that juncture. But the good news is, we took care of the FERC issue, which means that you will not have an ongoing expense, 'cause that would've been each of you.
That would've been a scary thing to find out after the fact.
Well, yeah, I mean, you, you would've had help preparing the report, but there were fees. Nothing that goes to the government, you don't pay a fee to find.
Exactly.
Same as with lawyers. Well, you wouldn't, you probably would've been able to have Green Sky do the reports, although they might've had to have a lawyer look at them. But, you know, fundamentally, that would've been ten different or nine different reports or many ends up being, and that would've been a nuisance. So it's, again, focus on where the lessons learned can come out of this and then the next go-around, 'cause I'm sure there'll be another one. Maybe it's not solar power, it's something else. Doesn't really matter what it is. When you wanna work cooperatively, having those folks engaged and, and knowing what you're getting into at the time is huge.
Supervisor McGruder's been waiting with a question ahead.
So this is a novel process and there were mechanisms in place that could've been utilized to not have us be at this place right now. But they were not. And so that's, it's a learning opportunity. Right now, financially, it seems like we're focused in on, are we gonna be approving more monies for these legal fees? I, we were, I think Pam, this whole board was here, actually, I think, when this all started. So I think I remember there was a, a suggestion that while this was the, the money we were asking for, the one sixty-five, I believe, that that would still be a floating, sort of like rate. And so also my own conceptualization of legal things was like, yeah, it's probably gonna be more, we're gonna incur more charges and so be prepared for that. And so it's, it's new for me to hear that, no, there's actually some process, mechanisms in place that we actually say, this is the cutoff and we just absorb that stuff. And so for me, that's new information and that would've been, that's gonna be helpful, sort of like moving forward. But at this point, if individuals, I get that there's a lot of people who are frustrated and angry and we can change some of those processes going forward. But we have a small part of this pie. And I guess the players, the power players who are more vocal and loud, I'm wondering like what their part of this pie is, would they be able to...
I, I think they're equally as small.
Okay.
Okay? I think the big player, obviously, the big player is the school district.
Yeah, and they're fine with...
They're not as vocal.
Okay.
The water authority may be getting a little vocal, but not nearly as vocal as those other people that have a similar-sized pie as we do.
Okay, and so...
Just to, just to reiterate about what, just to talk, our, our choices are, we pay what they're billed, we pay up to the hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, which is what we agreed to already, or we don't pay them anything.
But you already paid him some, right?
We've already paid him some, yeah.
I mean, I know you haven't paid to the one sixty-five, but you're paid...
We paid, we paid, of the one sixty-five, we paid about one twenty.
That's what I understood.
About what, one twenty?
One hundred and twenty.
And so for...
So I'm sorry, you can go ahead.
So for individuals who decide not to pay, oh, sorry, entities, municipalities who decide not to pay, what does that mean then, for the other individuals?
It's an interesting question because the liability is on the school district. They're the ones who signed the engagement.
That's right. School district would have to pick up the debt.
That's part of the, part of the, part of what you're talking about, Larry, which is, and Betsy, you guys were on that working group, nobody ever shared with you an engagement letter. So you don't have the engagement letter. You don't know what was said in the engagement letter. You know what has been vocalized to you. But the, an engagement letter for services is a contract. And if the contract says, I get paid this much, that's what I get paid. And, you know, I, I just think going forward, that oughta be something that, first of all, I don't think the school district should necessarily pick up the ball, right? I mean, they're, they're a big share here. But think about it, if they, if you were all equal, right? But they're the ones with the engagement, so they're stuck with it. There should be a way for you to review that and know it. You don't necessarily prove it, but you know it. You know what those terms are.
And I guess the, so the, the, and the expense would be incurred back onto the school district caring that if municipalities did not foot the bill for this, one, I think it's...
They would definitely not recommend us not pay up to the one sixty-five. We've already agreed with the school district that we would pay. Our portion of a hundred and sixty-five thousand.
Yeah, so I...
And I suppose, let me just enter, there's a, really a fourth option, which is, you pay to the one sixty-five and you say, we will pay another percent, twenty-five hundred dollars and we're done, right? And I've suggested that to a couple of people and they, they've kinda liked that suggestion as a way in which you sort of cut it back and then you let counsel work with the district on how he's gonna discount and share that.
And so that's why I was gonna ask at this point, can we put in that mitigation method right there?
You can say, we're paying that number and that's all we're paying, not any more than that.
So that's, that's what my recommendation was. I will pay two thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars and ninety-five cents with, and that's it. And I'm done. I've paid enough. So what she's saying is, so what she's saying the lawyers do is it's similar to what a public accountant does, what CPA firm does. We come in to do an audit, we estimate how many hours it's gonna take at our hourly rate, we give you an engagement letter that says, your audit, our auditors give us an engagement letter, that our audit's gonna cost X number of dollars. But if we change the scope of the audit, we can expect to pay more. So the year that we had to do a single audit because we borrowed more than a million dollars...
In addition to the regular audit, right.
That, in addition to the regular audit, that wouldn't fall under that contract because it was something outside the scope of what that contract was. So the big question is, did we ask this guy to do anything outside the scope?
No, no.
We probably didn't. But still, at this point in time, you know, the difference between not paying him, the, the difference, what we owe him above the hundred and sixty-five is four hundred and twenty-four dollars and eighty-two cents. So we could pay him eighteen hundred bucks or twenty-two hundred bucks.
And honestly, what was discussed at the working group meeting, which Betsy, I went for Larry, was that this attorney was told, we're gonna incur these additional legal fees, but we're occurring, incurring them at your risk. You may not get paid for them. I agree with Larry, though. I think we should pay it, but then tell them we're not paying any more. I mean, I think we heard at that meeting, Harris Township dropped out. They're paying their share of the legal fees that they owe up to a certain amount of money and then they're dropping out. So I think...
And then keep in mind, too, that if we reach certain, if we sign the contracts, then we start getting legal fees reimbursed.
Yes. Well, they get reimbursed to the school district. That's already, that's already factored in these numbers.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
Oh, did they already adjust for that?
I believe so, yeah. That was at seventy-nine.
No, that's not the Greens guy. That's what we paid Greens for.
No, that's the Green Sky adjustment.
No.
Yeah, that's what Randy said.
Well, Randy's lying.
Well, if this is the PDF...
Sixty-nine thousand.
If this is the PDF of the spreadsheet, I gotta be honest with you, whoever converted it, these numbers don't make any sense. I've looked at this three times and it makes my head hurt.
This does not include the sixty thousand dollars anywhere on this sheet. Does not include the sixty thousand dollars.
My respectful advice is, before you, anybody takes this to another meeting, is that somebody gets this right. Because the biggest problem I think you have in this whole process is that each time Pam has gone out to talk to people, the story has changed a little. And there are always gonna be people, when the story changes too many times, they get, they question things.
Okay, so this, this column here, this two seventy-eight, that is the one sixty-five plus the eighty thousand.
Yeah.
Okay?
That doesn't match.
You can't say it.
But that doesn't match too, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm doing, I'm doing math and it's not coming up right.
One sixty-five and eighty thousand.
Is not two hundred and seventy-eight thousand.
No, that's true.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying.
It's a little bit more.
Don't, don't focus on this, just answer the question.
Plus thirty, plus the eighty-seven, plus the thirty, the thirty that hasn't been built yet. Okay? So...
I just, yeah.
So anyway, I would say the two seventy-eight is the total legal. This green, sixty-nine, six seventy-five, it's what we paid Greg Shively.
Right.
That is not the sixty thousand dollars we're getting back. So nowhere on this sheet is the sixty thousand dollars that comes back. So if somebody told you it's built into these numbers, it is not.
Well, but what I know...
Okay, can I, can I bring it back to, to...
Yes, you can.
'Cause now I think you've got the board confused to a degree, but...
I didn't mean to do that.
No, I'm, thank you for, you cleared up a whole lot. Since we're on discussion, I think maybe we should not vote on this right now?
Well, we can, we, I think, I think I'm, can I, I'm prepared to, I'm prepared to vote for it. I just have a, wanted to finish my last thought.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, I feel prepared to vote on it. I guess the wondering then would be, what type of accountability do we all have with one another? Because again, we're, we're saying, at least for me, I feel like I'm fine with moving forward, approving, paying this additional sort of like expense with the stipulation that, you know, this is kind of like our limit. But you just said, this is news to me. Harris is not gonna pay any more moving...
They're just dropping out.
They're, they're dropping out completely.
They voted Monday to drop out. That's what we were told at the working group meeting.
But I think they already paid.
They're gonna pay the four, they owe four hundred some dollars and they're paying that.
So their twenty-two hundred bucks is four hundred and eighty bucks.
That's what they're paying.
So they're gonna pay now.
So they're gonna make themselves, they're gonna make the lawyer whole and then they're dropping out.
Okay.
Which is essentially what we're proposing to do.
It's definitely what we're saying. We're gonna pay the twenty-two hundred bucks, but we're not paying another one.
So I'm wondering if we're able to like get on the same page with the rest of the entities to be like, you know, we wanna move forward paying this, but it'd be nice for all of us to say, this is sort of like the limit to have more accountability for the lawyer to not charge additional costs? 'Cause I don't wanna see a scenario where we're like, we'll move forward, we'll pay this additional stuff, but everyone else is like, I'm not paying it. And then again, as you're saying, the school district is, you know, incurring some of those expenses. I don't, I don't think, just as a partnership, we should be leading in that way, so...
Well, I know for quite a few of the meetings and committee meetings, the executive committee meetings and the financial meetings, a lot of questions came up. And just as my supervisor, Supervisor Abrams mentioned, a lot of our colleagues were like, this came out of the blue. They were shocked to hear the, the cost, the added cost. And they're like, we were blindsided. So I'm, I'm no for a fact, the general form, when this comes up, you're gonna have, a lot of our colleagues are gonna question, how come they went over their amount of a hundred and sixty-five, if I'm not mistaking, that they, we, as the municipalities, agreed to. But now you're looking at, what was it, two, two hundred and something?
So, so here, just, just try to declare the mind a little bit, okay? What we have paid this lawyer so far, from my recollection, is a hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Okay.
Of the one sixty-five, we have paid him one ten. He then sent us an invoice, which went until June thirtieth, okay? So work got up to June thirtieth. Of a hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars. That's the invoice that I believe Suton... That's the invoice that I believe, um, Suton got a call about. Okay? So it came in at one ninety-seven. There was a negotiation done, okay, to take seventy thousand dollars off of that. So that's the one twenty-seven, seven fifty-eight. Legal fees through, in, in, in my, my regulation, it was, it was through, it says May, but my regulation was through June. But, um, so this one twenty-seven is work that he's done through, let's say, for the sake of argument, May twenty-twenty-four, of we, of which we owe 1.2% of. Okay? So we owe fourteen hundred twenty, thirteen hundred bucks, fourteen hundred bucks, okay? Then he's estimating that from June to the end of August, the work that the lawyer did is thirty thousand. Okay?
So one fifty-
So this one twenty-seven and this thirty, that's where this one fifty-seven, seven fifty-eight comes from.
Oh, okay.
You see that?
Yeah.
Okay? And our 1.2% of that, our 1.42% because it went up, um, is two thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars and ninety-five cents.
Okay.
So everybody's piece of the pie along here totals one fifty-seven, seven fifty-eight.
Okay.
So we haven't even reached the 165, if we got the seventy thousand back.
So, you know, a hundred and ten, that was a room of pay. Of this hundred and fifty-seven, seven fifty-eight, fifty-five of it is from the hundred and sixty-five. So if you just wanted to pay that portion, okay, then you would take the fifty-five thousand times 1.42%, seven hundred and eighty-one bucks.
Okay.
Does that clarify anything?
Yeah, Supervisor Abrams, and then we-
I, I claim that at any given time, I can be serially naive. And so I'm going to make a suggestion of what we can do, but nobody has to follow it. But I think that if, if, if we have an explanation that's jotted down or an outline, as, as you've explained it, that we then share with our colleagues at COG, that here's, here's what happened and here's what we're doing about, we should be doing about it, uh, that, I think that that is a, a good way to start the discussion. Now, maybe I'm naive thinking that anyone will agree to it. But I think that if we-
I certainly could write it down in narrative form.
In that way, okay, we try.
Send it to you. I can do that, if you would like.
Well, I feel, I feel, I felt better when I saw the actual breakdown in the numbers and what we're actually paying. Because again, we don't like government waste and we don't want to be wasting taxpayers' monies. But again, it seems like this, we're making a mountain out of, I won't say a molehill, but some individuals are making a mountain out of the molehill and it's just like-
We're not talking about, I mean-
It costs more to put in a street light.
It is the residents' money, but it's not a large portion of our budget.
Okay, well, I think we spent a lot of time on this. Supervisor Whitman, go ahead, go ahead.
One is that going, when all is said and done and signed and turned in, we will be saving money on this, on electricity. And the borough will meet its return on investment within two to three years. Okay, so there were two goals in this project. One was to, um, you know, provide an alternative form of, um, generating energy that was more carbon friendly to the earth. And the other was to do it financially viable, okay? It's, so it's not as financially viable as we had hoped or have, were led to believe at certain point. So that's one thing. So keep in mind that we have met the two goals that we started out with, okay? And second, in terms of, as Betsy said, let's focus on what we're going to focus on, because we're going to be stopped in the street or neighbors or fellow council people, um, focus on going forward. Keep it in, keep it in mind, we met our two goals. And also, what's the conference that you're going to this weekend, coming week?
ICMA, the International City Managers Association.
So this is a, a big deal, international, it's going to be well attended.
Thirty-five hundred attendees usually.
And who's speaking at that conference? Pam Adams, okay? Pam's a quick study, okay? So, um, she gets it. She, she gets, you know, the fact that the conversations between lawyers needed to get started at a, at an earlier point. Plus, she, we, the center region, can very proudly, uh, be the, the pioneers in this. And, um, God willing, that Pam Adams has enough time, she, she does enough as it is. But when she gets outreach from other areas wanting to do this, other entities wanting to do this, she will be a, a source of information and she can get that information out there. So I think we stand proudly on what we've done and honestly, on what we've learned. It's my story.
Okay, um, I'm willing to move past the discussion here. And, um, all in favor of paying the two thousand, two hundred and thirty-three ninety-five that Larry has suggested? Can I get a vote, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes. Thank you Larry and thank you, Betsy.
And thank you, Madam Chair, for letting us discuss it. It was important.
Next on the agenda, and I apologize to our folks for being, um, taking a little longer, but we needed to address that. Next on the agenda is the IT service provider. Amy, is that you?
We're going to let Larry do it.
Okay, I'm not sure that, uh, Amy wants me to speak anymore. This, this one will be easy.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, I don't know how far it goes back, but it certainly goes back to the, the red line that starts with the date of hire of Larry Pegg. Our, um, IT services are currently handled by State College Area Bureau. Okay? Um, State College Borough, um, charges us a rate every year for the IT services. Every year that rate has increased in the years that I have been here. It continues to go up. It's, it's became, um, an amount that Amy and I have decided to look outside at other IT services to see what they have to offer. We looked at a couple of different services and InfraDeft, which is a service odd of, um, Lebanon, I believe, Betland, Allentown, Allentown, worked with, uh, the city of Lock Haven, who had some major problems with their, um, IT and, and fixed them. So we asked them to come in and perform a free vulnerability assessment on our network, which they have done. And having done that, they're able to then turn around and give us a quote on IT services, because then they know how many computers we have, how many, um, police cars have computers in them. That was the issue with the other company we looked at would not do police cars. Was not approved to be able to do IT for police services. Um, InfraDeft, it is. InfraDeft has made us an offer for a three-year agreement at the same cost of what we're paying State College Borough right now. So instead of getting what we're paying, increase next year and an increase the following two years, we're going to remain flat with IT services for the next three years, which is, um, great. So I would recommend, um, that you move to approve a three-year agreement with InfraDeft to provide our IT services to the township at the rate of their contracts, which I said is not an increase from 2024, which we would not get from State College Borough.
Okay, um, what's the board's pleasure? Do you have any questions for Larry at this time?
I think we, like, maybe a motion.
Yeah, all right, can I get a motion?
Some of the-
Second.
Second, discussion? All in favor, say aye? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? The motion passes.
Good work.
Thank you Larry, Amy. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda?
I would like to pull the trick and treat, trick or treating.
That was just a trick.
Nope.
Sorry, it's been a late night.
I know. Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
If so moved.
Second? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is managers' report.
So I will keep this very brief because the hour is very late for us. Um, the one item I just want to touch on, actually, there's two things. But the first is that we're recommending that you cancel your October ninth meeting. I actually have to be at the PML conference that night. And then I was, we were also thinking that would give us more time to get the budget and the CIP together for you. So you would meet one time in October, later October, if that's okay.
No.
Suton wants a meeting. And then the last thing I wanted to touch on was just that there is invasive plant control work being done at the Hall Family Preserve. We put some information on our social media, um, just to let folks know. And some of the work won't start until after hunting season, but this is a very positive move for the preserve. It's work that's needed to be done for a while. And with that, I'll answer any questions you may have.
Amy, I want to talk briefly on the sinkhole.
Yes.
Um, you have any, any information on that, right?
So I'm going to turn to my sinkhole experts, Michelle and Ken, and let Michelle and, or Ken-
Sorry, Michelle, I'm just curious.
Well, since the, the last time we met here, the larger sinkhole, sinkhole number four has been repaired.
Oh.
Um, today they were, yesterday, today, this week, they were in the process of installing the level spreader, which is a corrective measure intended to distribute the flow of water into the basin over a larger area and prevent concentrated flow into their, into, you know, an area that may cause a, a problem. The success of any of these measures, whether the repair or the level spreader, has yet to be determined. You know, we're going to need a precipitation event to try and see how that works out. And we're awaiting some, um, additional information, some corrective action, action plan, catch-up data, some as-bill data, things like that from their engineer.
Okay, thank you on that. All right, next on the agenda is the committee reports. Um, my public safety was yesterday, I will follow up on that. Um, I know Larry and myself have been doing the budget, um, for finance. We have one tomorrow, we have one Tuesday, we have one next Tuesday and next Thursday. So we'll hold off on that. Is there any other, um, board member that would like to report on their committee report? All right, seeing none, next on the agenda is other business and next is the adjournment. Um, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'm moved.
Second?
Second.
This meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.